President.
Mr. President. Y'all have had a chance to look over the amendments. This is at the pre-council and regular council meeting for October seventeenth, two oh one seven.
Making a motion at the minute for the pre-council and regular council meeting of October seventeenth. Considered read as all members of the council have received copies and it could be approved or submitted.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Alright, thank you. Counselor Spidey, would you please on approval?
Sure. I would like to make a motion for the approval of current bills and the payment of two hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred six dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have any professional or consultant reports tonight? Thank you. Mayor?
Yes, good evening everyone. It's good to see you. Eric, I'll turn this way. You've all heard me before. Just wanted to say a couple of things. I wanted to thank Tellus for her support and help with the Trump retreat. We put that on out in front of City Hall here at this Halloween and it was a great success. By all, every indication and every, every measurement that we had. I think every city department I know, every city department participated. We had some residents that wanted to join in and participated as well. The library had a great program over there and it's hard to get a street count, but when you walk down the street and it's shoulder to shoulder, elbow to elbow, completely down the block, you know there are a lot of people there and that goes on for a couple of hours. So, it was a great success, something that we will likely do on an annual tradition now. Probably somewhere over a thousand people participated in those couple of hours. So, thank you all for your participation, many of you were there. I appreciate your support on that. We thought it was a very good team building thing. Most of our counselors were there as well and so we appreciate those of you who supported that. I wanted to announce, and I'll turn around to the council now because you've been asking this question. So, starting January, the first of January, we're gonna have this building open five days a week. Those who apply in, we don't have all the details and all the schedules. It does not mean that everyone will be working five, eight hour days, but we will have it staffed for business five days a week and will be open for business. It's frustrating for those who want to do business with the city to come and have the door locked on Friday. I've been here a number of times on Friday and seen people pull up and drop away because the front door's locked. So, I just wanna let you all know that. But that's our plan. We're just working out the details of scheduling. Not sure we have everything probably yet.
Thank you.
Mayor, do you want to ask just one question that we can talk about a little bit later in detail? Does that include services, public service? Well, not fire and police, of course. Talking about city services?
No.
Or just admin?
What I meant was that this building, anything that you do in this building will be different. Some of them are, some of the other departments are. The library's always been open more than, more than four days, five or six days a week. Police, fire, other different. So, we're, we're tailoring the schedule to the service so that we can be most effective. But what, what has been determined is we need to have this building open for business when, when a resident comes in or a business person comes in for a license or whatever the issue is. This will be open for business, which it has not been.
Thank you. I do not see any department heads in the audience tonight, so apparently we have no department head reports. Could we start out down when you're in Council London with anything?
Yes. First of all, I want to say good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple things. I'm gonna give my time to the Irondale Cheerleading Group. They won first cheer this past week and we're so excited. Ms. Gilbert inviting me here and I think the cheer coach is Haley Walker. She's back there. Haley Walker is back there as the cheer coach. I'd like for them to come. I think they're gonna have a little cheer for it.
Please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Clerk. We are just honored to be here. The reason why we wanted to come is because we are so proud of our young ladies and we wanted you to see who is at our schools and representing the name of the City of Irondale. And not only are they cheerleaders, they are straight A students, they are A B on road students. Several of them were honored last week. They are gymnasts, they are volleyball players, they are athletes. And when they go out, they represent the City of Irondale. So, what they will do first is do their cheer that they've won, believe first or second place in a competition in. And after that, they will come up one by one and introduce themselves to you. So, I now present to you the Irondale Middle School Cheerleaders.
Victory, oh yes!
Victory, we won't win, do it again. W-I-N, Mounties will win. W-I-N, Mounties will win. Red and black, Mounties, let's fight. We are the best. Victory, oh yes!
So, we will start if you will, each young lady follow up through the middle and introduce yourselves. And also, they competed against, I believe there were eight to ten other Jefferson County schools and our girls came out in first and second place.
Hello, I'm Olivia Scarborough. I'm in third grade.
Hi, my name is Morris White. I'm in the seventh grade.
Hi, my name is Amy Dawson. I'm in the seventh grade.
Hello, everybody. My name is Kielmar. I'm in the eighth grade and I'm going to argue with what you mean.
Hello, my name is Tavia Chavel and I'm in the seventh grade.
Hello, my name is Deanna Gray and I'm in the seventh grade.
Hi, my name is Ronda James and I'm in the eighth grade.
Hi, my name is Autumn Tyler. I'm in the eighth grade and I'm the captain of the cheerleading.
These are our Irondale Middle School Cheerleaders and we are just honored that we, Council London and the rest of the council may have us here tonight. And we thank you. We can't do it without your support. We need you. We would love to see you at our school. Our doors are open and we just extend a hearty welcome to each of you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you all so much for coming tonight. Great evening. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two things. I wanted to make a mention of the One Nation Under God Veterans Day Breakfast. It's going to be November the eleventh from eight-thirty to ten o'clock. It's gonna be at the Arbor's Apartment Dining Room, St. Martin's in the Pines. It is free for all veterans in Irondale area and St. Martin's residents. Five dollar donation for others will be accepted. This is being done by the Exchange Club of Irondale. And so, there's also going to be some patriotic music from Brassis for him. But once again, One Nation Under God Veterans Day Breakfast from eight-thirty to ten at St. Martin's in the Pines. Always a great event. The speaker is going to be Major Paul Logan, the Assistant Jeffco Sheriff and past veteran. The other thing I wanted to bring in, I don't think I see anybody hear from it, but I wanted to recognize the ladies that organized the Trick or Treat Trail over in the Holiday Gardens area. That would be Samantha Goodman, Natalie Cook, and Carla Sims. Fantastic event. I was able to speak to Sam's husband last night and me and my wife and my two girls, we, we walked up both the streets and it was an absolutely fantastic event. Tons of kids out, people saying things like, "I haven't seen this many Trick or Treaters on the streets since the eighties." I mean, it was just fantastic, the feeling on that street. So, hopefully they'll do it again. Hopefully this can grow into other areas of the cities. I was just very, very proud of the work that they took on personally in order to pull this off. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I just wanted to reiterate what the mayor said about the Trump or treat. My wife and I rode our car and opened the back tailgate and we gave out candy by six o'clock. We brought, we brought a ton of candy and had to get refilled twice. So, wonderful time. I think, I know the kids had a good time and wish her did and just wanna invite everybody to come next year.
And participate.
Yeah.
Yes. Just a couple of things. Just wanna mention that the Holiday Gardens Neighborhood Association will meet on next Tuesday at six-thirty at the senior center. Everyone is welcome. And I also just wanna make a comment in reference to burglary that occurred. Okay, I'm getting my days mixed up. What is this, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? In Holiday Gardens area. And particularly, what street was that again?
Wythea.
Of course, everyone would like to maintain, everyone in this community would like to maintain safety in this. We all want to live in a safe area throughout our city. But in this particular case, I'm concerned about the Holiday Gardens area. I have mentioned before and I have asked, all the counselors have been aware that I've asked for more patrol in the Holiday Gardens area. And the only reason I asked for it is because that particular area has the highest crime rate in the city. I know it has been for the past couple of years. I haven't gotten any information as far as what crime looks like this year since 2017. But I know through history, Holiday Gardens have had the highest crime rate within the city as far as neighborhood. I ask again, Mayor, if we would consider, you would consider putting a little bit more patrol in that area. I don't know if we did it this summer. I did ask for more patrol during the summertime. I don't know if we put more patrol up there. I didn't see more. Now, let me, let me put this disclaimer out there. Our police department does an excellent job. They do an excellent job. Chief, excellent as far as his leadership with our police department. And they did an excellent job catching the guys or whomever broken out that house in Wythea. But in this case, if we could consider putting a little bit more police patrol in Holiday Gardens, you think we would?
I'll be happy to respond to that. But just to say that, I'm not sure how much more we could put. They captured the people who were involved in this, picked them up within, within a block or two of where the incident occurred. We had two patrol cars, three patrol cars there at the time that they captured them, which was about five blocks away. I was there on the site while they were still looking for the third guy. And I, I can tell you, I couldn't be more proud of what they did, how they did, and their response there. So, I'm telling you that from the time the call came in when the incident happened, they could not have been more than one minute or two minutes away. So, because they called basically in the same block or two blocks. So, I mean, I hear everybody wants more police protection. If they were that quick to my neighborhood, I would be jumping up and down and saying, "You know, that was a good job." So, we're cognizant of that all across the city. And they do a fine job and they will continue. I'll make that comment, but they will continue to do just as good a job as they've been doing.
But Mayor, that doesn't address the fact of Holiday Gardens. I understood everything that you said. But in this case, and particularly Holiday Gardens, I know they do a good job. I know they was on point in three to five minutes as far as whatever you said. But if there was more of a presence, maybe that will deter crime in that area as far as what we're having right now. But I do hear you. They are doing a good job. But if we could have more of a presence, patrol, I guess. So, that's all I'm asking. That's all I have.
Tonight, the one thing I will start with on mine is basically we have something that will be going on with Motion Industries that's going to require the reinstitution of the Industrial Development Board. We currently only have one member we think that's left on that board from his previous reiteration and that was Jesse Rafer. So, that board has to be a minimum of five up to a maximum of seven individuals. And we need, which we can do other things. Go ahead. That's why I'm gonna turn it over to our council because...
Slight correction. We have to have at least seven members. You can have any number beyond that, but at least seven. Most of them have to come from Irondale, be taxpayers and registered electors here in Irondale. You can have up to two that come from outside Irondale if they are coming from a area where a project might be located. But I would suggest that getting, having all of them come from within the City of Irondale would be appropriate. None can be any officers or employees of the city. They will serve either two, four, or six-year terms initially. We'll stagger them out that way. And then after each initial term, then everybody would serve a six-year term. We're kind of, I'm suggesting put it together as if they were this way, the board, just because that's kind of ineffective with this. The board has never been to standard. It's just that we don't have any people on it or maybe just one. So, the, oh, and also the members should come if possible from membership of the Chamber of Commerce. That's also the statute that relates to this arrangement of the board.
So, we've got a little bit of a head start. We did receive a membership list tonight from the chamber. I would suggest everybody look over that because we will need to get this resolved fairly quickly. Mayor, do you have a little detail on what the Motion Industry project actually is?
I know it involves a winding down or unwinding the transaction that occurred here a while ago.
They leased property that was a bond transaction and in the documents relating to that transaction, it stated that when the bonds were paid off, that Motion Industries would be leaving the property back this year. And that's why we need the board to be re-populated so that they can actuate that. It's just concluding what was agreed to agency.
Please.
After your report, I'll...
That's, that's all I was going to discuss tonight because we...
Like, two things. James, can we get microphones on the mayor and the city attorney so that they can be heard clearly by everyone from where they're sitting?
They have one. My name is Bud.
And number two, I know we've already talked about the agenda and we'll get to it in a few minutes, but since the mayor spoke about going to five days Monday through Friday, we need to, I'd like to, when we get to it, take number five off of consent, but we need to discuss it now because it's going, the days are not gonna work out just exactly right.
I have a question also. James, when was the last time we appointed some IDB members? About a year or so ago, wasn't it? Couple of years?
No, it's probably about three years ago.
Was it three?
About three years ago.
With the Linda High and some of those other, Johnny Williams?
I know Jesse was a part of it. The lady that you just mentioned.
Miss High.
There's another lady that serves on the ZDA board. President, that was a part, that was a part of it. But they, they never had a meeting. They will approve our resolution, but they, they never had a meeting or never expressed the interest of serving after that resolution was passed or adopted.
We've got six, six positions to fill. Is that right, Linda?
Assuming you have one person on this board, you have at least six slots to fill.
I think we need to, that person we need to contact, see if they want to continue to participate before we start the...
You need to have a total of at least seven at the end of putting the board together. You can have the ones you choose.
I heard something about a list from the chamber. Just walked up here.
Did I miss it?
Those are membership lists, yeah.
Oh, okay. Find you. Thank you. Okay. And we'll probably, based on their need to move forward with that, we will probably need to resolve that next month, one way or the other, on the board. Okay, do we have any reports of boards or non-council members?
I do have one thing I want to ask James as far as housing and abatement goes.
You want to make some comments at this point?
I basically would like to give, give James an opportunity to give us an update on housing abatement. Couple of things that we just spoke on. There was a house, I can't remember the address. It had to be cited in the paper. I think we're about, we're, we're approaching that timeline, if not gone slightly past it. So, you were going to send a gentleman out to talk to that property owner about taking care of it?
That's the house on First Avenue South.
Okay.
Yes, I was gonna ask George Pickle, our building inspector, if he would go down and talk to them because he's been going down to check on the other two properties that they've been working on.
Right.
So, I'll ask him if he would follow up with them and just figure out exactly what they plan on doing to that piece of property.
That's the, the old white house. But wasn't there a second one that we moved on to abate, but we couldn't abate on it because we had to put something in the newspaper? That wasn't the same problem?
That was the house.
That was the same house? Okay, so I think the two things are okay.
Yeah.
So, he's gonna go down and chat with that. And then any updates on any other homes in the housing abatement pipeline that I've noted?
There was a, there was a meeting held on October the twenty-sixth with George Pickle and four members of the abatement board. He went through the process with them to help them to understand what really qualifies for abatement. He refined the list that we currently had. So, it's down to maybe five or six homes that now are part of that list. The abatement board said that they would use those five or six as the next homes that they would like to begin the process to see if we could either get the owners to demo the homes or get them to the process where the city would take on that responsibility.
Thank you.
Sufficient?
Absolutely.
Okay. We now move to approval of the agenda in Councilroom. Since you have some questions...
Yes, if I could, I'd like to, like, ask that the agenda be approved with the following. Item one, two, three, and four on consent and item six on consent. I'd like number five, which goes in the discussion board.
Do you have a vote on that motion?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you. At this point, we will take public comments on agenda items only. Appreciate it. Whoever comes up to the mic, if they would fill out one of the forms on the back wall and hand that to the city clerk when they come forward. But this session are the one at the end of the meeting where we have general comments. So, anyone on the, right now on agenda items only. Alright? Then we'll move in and that will be, excuse me. We'll go to item number five on the agenda, which is resolved with Resolution two oh one seven R one twenty-three, approves the holiday calendar year for 2018.
Mayor, the mayor mentioned that he's going to five days after the first of the year. Are you going to do four ten-hour days or five eight-hour days?
It's gonna be a combination is what I expect. But will you account, I don't know if you're wondering about how you account for that in terms of holiday and talking about?
Yeah, Veterans Day is on, next year is on Sunday and you've got scheduled for Thursday for, for the employees of the holiday. And then on Thanksgiving, Wednesday before, and usually when people schedule a day off, that's Thanksgiving, it's Wednesday and Friday. And on the schedule, you've got Thursday, I'm sorry, Thursday and Friday usually scheduled. And here we've got Wednesday and Thursday, assuming that the city would, would be closed on Friday. So, those are two days that are going to fall in the middle of the week where they should be on Friday or possibly Veterans Day maybe shouldn't be moved to Monday.
Now, when you, first of all, that's why I said we gotta work out some details on the actual schedule. But when you've got some people working ten hours, some four, and I'm assuming some of the fire departments even a different odd schedule.
They're twenty-four hours.
It's hard to, it's hard to change. But when we adjust right on, on the day, we give them eight hours as a typical day, you can explain that?
Yes. Probably what would happen if a holiday falls on an individual's off day, they get a chance to bank that particular day. So, say for instance, if my, if I'm off on Friday and the holiday falls on Friday, either I get another day or I get to bank that day to be able to use it at a later date. But it's still only eight hours.
My concern is we're gonna be open on Fridays. Now, Thanksgiving, you've got scheduled to be closed on Wednesday and Thursday. And why not close on Wednesday and, I mean, Thursday and Friday then?
I think that was the intent, right? Or I think that might have been an oversight.
Cause, yeah, you know, cause if you, if you're gonna go five days and then be off Wednesday and Thursday and come back Friday. And then again, Veterans Day was gonna fall on Sunday and you've got it scheduled for Thursday as well. And that's, so that is a need to be moved to Friday or Monday.
Yeah, I think that was probably an oversight, the agenda was scheduled to do.
No, I received that from Patricia.
Alright. So, our intent was to only change, to only change Veterans, not Veterans Day. Call them as veterans, make it out of within the years. So, we can, we can come back to this if you'd like, that we were intending on Friday. It's just a little confusing. I said when you're only working Monday through Thursday now and then you go back, a part of them will still be Monday through Thursday and some of them are gonna be off on Friday already. So, let me, let me just say, let's, let's just take this off. Is there any urgency on that?
I don't have any problem, you know.
I understand.
Just passing it tonight like it is and then we come back to visit it. So, they'll, they'll know that they got their, their vacation secured. And we come back and, and once you correct it, we come back.
I'm just not sure how we're gonna be able to present that to you all with some staff in this building. Some staff working four days, some staff working five days without drawing out a huge flow chart and every staff person. Because, because the ones that are working five days is gonna be different than the ones that are already off on Thursday or Friday. I mean, on Friday, and then working Monday through Thursday.
My next question would be, are you planning on closing Friday after Thanksgiving?
Typically, it would be.
Okay, so we need to move.
So...
But I think, I think with that, Mayor, somebody was, say for instance, if I was Tuesday to Friday and the holiday was Friday, then I would just get to Wednesday.
Get to Wednesday. But, but then you got somebody's Monday through Thursday already and, you know.
But it usually works out pretty, you know. Like I said, it's not gonna be a perfect deal.
Right.
You know, the way that we, the way that we had it set up with either doing four, four tens is gonna be very hard where you have something that fits where everybody would...
Did the same with that.
Yes, you know, some people, if you, some, some people may have to work that Friday. I mean, you know, so, but...
So, here, here's the point for you all. The number of days is what should be important. So, if you approve, if you approve a day for New Year's, a day for New Year's Eve, Martin Luther King Day, a day for George Washington, Martin Luther King Day, these days, if you approve that number of days, we can work out the scheduling with the individual state.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that, yeah.
We'll, we'll make sure that they all know. But it's just hard to put it on one chart when you've got five different variations.
Would you like to put that form of a motion? Or do we have other questions?
Yeah, yeah. I'll make a motion. We approve the schedule, you know, with the provision that the mayor and the, and the city clerk will work out the schedule with the individual employees, whether they're working four or five days a week.
Do I have a second on that motion, Mr. Speaker?
No, we're, we're saying the, with the holiday schedule, the days are gonna remain the same though. We just wanna make sure. And they will make amendments as far as the dates.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work out the days so that everything works out for everybody.
The main thing is twelve holidays in one person. It's a total of thirteen days.
Okay, I understood that to be your motion.
Yes, that's correct. If they correct it, we can work it out with the individual employees depending on their work.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you. Now, move on to item number seven, which is resolved at Resolution two oh one seven R one twenty-five. Authorizes the mayor to contract with the Greater Irondale Chamber of Commerce in the amount of forty thousand dollars. Authorizes the mayor to contract with the Greater Irondale Chamber of Commerce in the amount of forty thousand dollars.
Make a motion that ordinance twenty seventeen R one twenty-five be considered read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I make a motion that all rules that would present the immediate consideration and adoption of ordinance twenty seventeen R one twenty-five be suspended and that unanimous consent be given for immediate consideration of said ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor, we'll start, it's Council London?
Yes.
Counselor Spidey?
Yes.
Counselor Bearden?
Yes.
Counselor Wilson?
Yes.
My?
Yes.
I make a motion that ordinance twenty seventeen R one twenty-five be finally passed and adopted as introduced.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, motion passes. Thank you very much. Any other business that you need to do at this point? We will now open the meeting to general comments from the floor. Please remember, if you will complete one of the forms in the back of the room and bring it forward to the city clerk. And also that, uh, your time limit is three minutes for your comments per person, if you would please. If you'd like to come on forward, and you can throw it out after the fact, get it to the clerk, please.
Where?
Out right here.
Wow.
Right there, next to, at the bottom.
Is this on agenda items only?
No, the agenda's, the agenda's complete, it's not agenda items.
If you'd like to go ahead and stage your comments, you can fill the form out later and get it to the clerk. Just so you get a twenty-three lead, please.
Uh, my.
If you just stage your minute, please, thank you.
My name is Ben Bremer. I've lived in Irondale about forty years, living on the hill, and I have a dog. My dog moved my life.
Okay.
There is, the social media is awash with what's happening to the Irondale Dog Park. Uh, that's the backyard of the old horse store. Uh, this was an active, the park was founded by this woman, of which three councilmen still here. We spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that park. We're paying an exorbitant rental fee. And I don't know that we've even gone back to Mr. Gold, who's not the charming person we'd like to, but go back to him and say, look, cut us a break on this. Six dollars and twenty-five cents a square foot, which is about what we're paying per year, for rough land is exorbitant. If he says no, say fine, we're gonna move our police and our water out. He's trying to sell that. We have the ability to twist a little arm. And we have cut, or we're planning to cut, a great deal of what we provide our citizens. This is just another. And I'm not saying the people, the dog park, our can and torches and pitchforks, they're getting real close. They're getting more close, because we're told that park's gonna close, cause we're not gonna run in the lease. And what do we got? Is there a plan for a new lease? There's, there's a plot for one, maybe. There's no plan, there's nothing formal put together. And there's an old saying, love me, love my dog. And that's where a lot of the people would go, and there are a lot of people that go. John has been there, John has seen it. Is it perfect? No. But it attracts at least, what, in a week auto, there are two hundred, two hundred and fifty people coming a week, if not more, even if not. So, you know, I'm just saying, maybe we can't get Mr. Gold to come down, and that becomes a financial problem that you are gonna have to deal with. But for gosh sakes, go confront him and have some backbone and say, look, Mark, good buddy, we're moving our stuff out. You're trying to sell this, and if you don't have a high occupancy rate, you're not gonna do real good. Now, maybe that's playing hardball, but why not? I mean.
Well, thank you.
That's, that's what I think.
Does anybody want to comment on our work session last night?
Well, I, yeah, I can make a comment. The, uh, there's some, there were some citizen, some citizen here last night that's willing to get together, and I've been in contact with them today, actually, and, uh, trying to put a citizen committee together. Anyone who can be involved with this committee is invited. And then, uh, my priority is that the mayor and I will get together with this citizen committee and sit down and come over and plan for all of our parks, especially the dog park, that's, that's the plan. If we hope we here and I can sit down as a park chair person committee with this committee and sit down and come over with a plan, uh, to move this park forward.
I have a question. Should I just go to the microphone, or just ask?
The same way with the prime man, you're welcome to come over and you can fill out the paperwork after you're finished. Thank you.
If you have a plan to.
Would you identify yourself, please?
My name is Abigail Van Oostman. If you have a plan to meet with the citizens committee, what is, what is it that you're waiting on discussing? Moving out of the dog park that exists?
The citizens that's here last night, the park committee, was talking about finding out what he wants to purchase, uh, buy it for, sell it for, and come up with a plan to buy, to buy it outside. And that was the plan, and we won't start.
On a dog park or the entire?
The dog park, yeah, that was part of the plan. Cause they, they like where it's at, they, I mean, they just, and people like where it's at, cause I've talked to them, they, they love location where it's at.
Certainly, we all, all of us who go there, and there's, and there are several hundred of us who go there, you know, and of course, you know, us.
Correct.
We all want the dog park to remain, because it's convenient and it has some of the natural amenities that, that are useful. But, I mean, so the citizens committee is not planning on finding some other dog park?
No, that's not, that's not.
Thank you.
Please.
My name's Candy Colwell, and I live at five zero zero one Coleman Road. I'm surprised that ADA is not getting in touch with the Galt's Dog Stop Park. It's one of the worst I've ever seen. It's not handicap accessible unless it's all the way down to the end and where to break the chain and let people in. I mean, it's really bad. And I've been told that the guy paid six million dollars for that little piece, those two little pieces, come on, for real? If y'all pay that, I'm leaving the city and never looking back. But we've got other things that need to be taken care of before we take care of the dog park. I like the dog park, I always shop, or stop and get something to eat, Ray's or the other place. But what are y'all maintaining? Because I don't see it. The water park where the, those are always leaking, where the dogs drink water, are always leaking, leaking. I have a big problem with people smoking, or leaving their. My dog, for one, almost died, and she's still getting care at Dr. Webber's because she ate a cigarette butt. I've asked these people politely, if you're gonna smoke, do it in your car, but they'll do it inside the park, and of course, they totally, well, outside. Right, and you throw your cigarette butt on the ground, and other dogs, other people that I know of, their dogs ate tobacco. It will kill a dog, just like chocolate. A lot of people didn't know that, but it will kill a dog. It almost killed mine. And y'all, if we do decide to keep the park there, which I like it there, I'd be going out there and picking up big older rocks. There's actually a picnic table, I'm surprised, somebody hasn't gotten a cut on or whatever. It's ridiculous. I'll volunteer myself. Tell me what you need done, and I'll volunteer to do it. But y'all already, pardon me, I have a pooper stuffer. I think other people's poo when they go do it. And, uh, we're supplied with plastic bags, and they still want you to pick up dogs, too. So, you need, we need to address, if we're gonna keep it there, and this man's gonna work with us, the money you're spending, it's got to be spent better, because that park, it's not, as far as the rocks on the ground and everything, I mean, I just got to twist my ankle every time I go out there, and I'm picking up rocks and throwing them in that little square area. But, you know, they say they better take care of it. And I agree, it should stay there. If not, move it to another place. But money better spent wisely, and back at dog park. Cause I don't see, go to Coleman and see how they spend their money on their dog parks and other cities.
Thank you, Dan, appreciate it.
I respond.
Please.
Yeah, I, I, I would do you a disservice if you walk out of here with just what you've heard thus far, so I, I wanted to just be open and upfront with you. Uh, what Mr. London said to you, uh, is Mr. London's opinion, it's not the opinion collectively of the council or of the mayor. So when he said that he's only looking at that location, uh, that may be true, he may only be looking at that location, but I can tell you that I'm looking at other options and all options. And I think there will be other sentiment that, that if you speak to the counselors. Um, so I, I just don't want you walking out of here saying, well, they told me that this was the only location that we're looking at, and this is the only option, because that in fact is not the case. So I just wanted to, I wanted to be clear on that. What, one of the options that we proposed was Roughner, and, um, that is a viable option. Uh, it may or may not work, it may or may not be the choice of where we end up, but it is a viable option to consider. So to say that we're only looking at one option would be foolish and sort of shortsighted for us, uh, to not look this. I can tell you that the lease is terminating in January, uh, so my goal was to try to have something to transition to, so that you weren't left without a place at that time. Um, we can drag this thing out for two years, you know, if we, if everybody, you know, wants to have this, and then somebody else wants to have that, and we wouldn't debate it for that, that long. But that was my goal personally, with a, with a larger vision of what we did for Roughen Park, not just a dog park, but other, other items that, uh, I think would appeal to, to the family. The dog park being a central part of it, and being an important part of it, but not the only part of it. Uh, we've applied for some funding to help us get started with that. But I can tell you for a fact that as of right now, based off the vote of this council, the communication that we've had with Mr. Gold, is that the lease is terminating the first part of January. I just don't want you walking out of here saying, oh, we think there's a hope. He, he may give it to you, he may, he may rent it cheaper, uh, but I can tell you that he doesn't have a whole lot of incentive to do that. He, he has incentive to keep it occupied. Sometimes statements are made without all of the facts, talking about the police department. I think we pay a dollar a year on the police department lease, that's what we were told. Um, so not a lot, not a lot of money in his pocket, you know, to, to, to say that that's a big bargaining chip for us. So I'm, I'm just trying to, to set the scene, to be as open, as honest, and as, as forthright with you, so that you don't walk out of this place hearing one statement, and then see something else happen on the other end, and say, well, that's not what they said. Just listen to who says what, and then go to them if it doesn't work out that way, and, and, and bring your complaints at that time to them, okay? So I just, I just, I felt compelled to at least let you know that there's more than one side to this story.
Mr. President, let me, let me, just put it on your mind. Uh, sorry, your call.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, everybody. Uh, I, I guess the mayor said, I thought I may have mis, may, may say, we're all looking at some other places, we are. But the citizens, but the citizen wants to keep it there. And that's, that's what they said last night at the meeting. They wanna keep it at that location. That's what they want. And I think, uh, as city council, I think as mayor, we need to listen to the citizen. You know, I think that's the first thing we wanna do as elected official, to pay attention to the people that put us where we are today. And that's what they, some of the folks that was here last night say. Yeah, we are looking at a location, uh, we haven't determined, this council hasn't determined, but there was an interview, uh, done at Roughen Park. Maybe, maybe, maybe people think that's, that's where the dog park is moving. We haven't decided that as council, none of us. But we should be listening to the citizen. Not, no, don't listen to me, don't listen to the mayor. We, we should be listening to you guys about this thing. Whatever is happening in the city of Irondale, we as elected official should pay attention to what the voices are saying to the people that put us here. And that's the bottom line. If I, if I misspoke and say we weren't looking at the location, I apologize for that, because we are, because Mark Gold may not want it, we may not be able to get that property, may not sell it to us, may not get the lease, but we might, the lease is gonna. And January, like the mayor said, in January, the lease is gonna be gone. So we have to look for a different location. That's, that's, that's a plus, that's a must. But the citizen of people of Irondale, two hundred and fifty people a week who walks through the parking lot, who shop in those stores, who eat pizza, who reset the, uh, restaurants there, that's big. That's a big deal for the city of Irondale. If it goes to Roughner, if it goes to Roughner, possibility that might, that might happen. But what's gonna happen to Grassroots Station D, when you take two hundred and fifty people a week, foot traffic going into that property? Then what's gonna happen? And see, and that's what I'm saying, and it's, it's never, see, some people think it's about John London, it's not about, never been about John London. It's about you guys, it's about the people of Irondale, what you want. And that's the way it should be, that's where it should always be, and take personal issue out, and all of that. You know, it's not me against anybody else, it's the people of Irondale, what do you want? What do you want? And that's the bottom line, and that's the bottom line.
Well, let me wrap, wrap up the conversation. The park will not cease, it will be in continuity. And we did have individuals that had been recruited to be part of the solution, that had offered to try to do fundraising to offset the cost in response to this Colwell's question, uh, to try to offset the cost to the city of trying to revitalize the park and make it what it, uh, they want it to be, so, cause they are the users. And I'll just make that comment as an end to everything that's been said from this end. Do we have other comments from the audience?
I do.
Excuse me, maybe. They're faster.
Some unanswered questions, and the, the woman in the back, uh, was kind of reiterated what I was thinking, and that is that it's thirty thousand dollars. The gentleman mentioned that we've already spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars since the park opened. So my question is, what are we getting for that thirty thousand? Who's responsible for that leaky water thing that doesn't work? Who's responsible for maintaining the park, mowing the grass, doing those kinds of things? Is that part of the thirty thousand? Does Mark Gold do that? Who's responsible for that? Or is that another additional expenditure for the city? These are things that we like to know as citizens of Irondale.
Can the mayor, can I, can I ask for a response to that?
Yeah, the city, the city is responding, in addition to the thirty thousand a year, the city is responsible for maintaining, meaning cutting the grass and cleaning up and that sort of thing.
So how much are we spending on that?
I don't have the number, but there is additional cost, particularly in, in power. And, and the thought is, if we, if we move from there and we go to one of our locations, then it becomes our own. And we're, that money we're putting there, we're investing in our own, something that all.
Yes, okay.
I'm Jane Bearden, four hundred and fifty-six, you're of Iron, Irondale. Um, I have two statements, and I don't want, I don't want everybody to pout on me, and I don't want everybody to think this is Terry. It's not Terry, it's me, I, I have a mind of my own. My question is, and I have dogs, and they're my babies, and I love them, and I've been to the dog park. But when I moved here, six years ago, there was no dog park, what y'all do with your dogs then? That's just a statement. But my suggestion is, um, the place behind the pavilion at Beacon Park, it's a nice sized place, it's level, it's got grass, there's water there. If people use the pavilion, they've got the center of the track to play their football, or their soccer ball, or their kickball, or whatever it's called. Why couldn't we fence that level part off where there's grass? There's bathrooms for the, uh, humans, um, there's shade to get out of the sun where there's not down there. It's level, and it's big enough for the dogs to run and play. It's a nice sized place in this level, and it's got grass, it's not got rocks, it's got a water faucet there where we could do a little, little thing with the water coming up when somebody's there, and then they could turn it off when they're not there. And we own it, and it's in the general location, and that's my suggestion.
Thank you.
Y'all know where I'm talking about?
Again, I think you've given a good challenge to the part. Again, I think you've given a good challenge to the Parks and Recreation Group to consider, and they do have public involved. If, again, I'm assuming Counselor London, if somebody would like to volunteer to join the group, you'd be more than happy to include them in the process. Uh, Cal, did you have one comment for?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Cal Fast, fifty-six, thirty-seven Hampton Road, Irondale. If we could just get all the information brought to the public before a decision is made, so that we can put in our two cents worth, uh, as our own opinions. We, we trust you folks to do your, uh, due diligence, whatever, uh, inform us of everything that's possible, so that, uh, a discussion can be had, to, to work out the best thing for everybody.
Thank you.
That's all I've got.
Appreciate it, Cal.
You need to take work to me?
I know you got your information, thank you. Any other comments from y'all? All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank y'all very much for coming tonight, appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.